This past week, the Recreation Committee reminded me that they're due to present their annual report to the council very soon. I think it would be good to receive their report during our deliberations on the budget, so I'll be adding their report to an agenda sometime in the next few weeks. It would be good if they also addressed the key points of the council's strategic plan. We'll need to get their perspective on how our goals can be met. The winter basketball program is very successful, but I'd like to know about other areas where we can see strong partnerships and the use of volunteers. I hope the Recreation Department is collaborating with the Recreation Committee. I'd like to see the two of them providing some concrete guidance to the council on a plan to develop more partnerships using volunteers to a much greater extent, particularly given our budget constraints. I'd also like to know how we can achieve programs with wider community participation. I also see the potential for our discussions about facility hours later this evening and the discussion of facility use of the new auditorium in the coming weeks tying directly into all of this. Finally, to make sure that we can give the department and the committee time to be sure that these areas are addressed, I'm trying to adjust our budget schedule slightly. We haven't had much success so far, but the city clerk and I and the city manager are continuing to work on that. Councilmember Seamus, did you have a comment?
I just appreciate you bringing up the question of the strategic plan, and I'm hopeful that all of our budget discussions talk about the strategic plan and how the proposal works us towards accomplishing more of the goals that we set in that plan. That's all. Thank you.
If I can just mention two other things. One, I wanted to mention that I think a lot of people are aware that this evening is Sinadai in the Legislature in Annapolis, so they will be working until, I assume, midnight unless they hold the clock, but I don't think they will. And I know that they have essentially finished with the budget, and what they have done is to make the cuts in the highway user revenues and the police aid to municipalities kind of permanent. They've said that they want to make those cuts for fiscal year 11 and also 12, and they've established a task force of people to look at those things, but they've essentially said those funds aren't coming back anytime soon. So we should check and see if they've managed to do any other damage before midnight tonight. And the final thing I wanted to mention is good news, which is I received a letter from the Government Finance Officers Association, and they wanted to notify us that our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2009, qualifies for certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this is the, what, about fourth year in a row that we've gotten this award? Three, four years, something like that. And there will be a formal presentation of that later, but just wanted to recognize the good work of Yvonne Brooks and City Manager Bar Matthews and all of the staff who worked on that financial report and who have really brought the level of the financial reporting in the city up to very high standards and are keeping them there. So that's very good news, and we really appreciate that. Hope people have comments. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the Recreation Department and Recreation Committee issue that we'll consider in the future. I'm reminded of the time not so long ago when we had the Tacoma Park Singers and the Tacoma Park Municipal Band and the Jazz Band as well, all here looking for guidance on when they can use our facilities. And I thought at that time, and I continue to think, that if there was some intermediary group like the Commission or Committee, some entity associated with REC, it would be much better for them to handle that entity, to handle that kind of question than for us to have to decide on a piece-by-piece basis who is going to get into our facilities for rehearsal time. And so I think you're touching on something that's important for us as we struggle with a tough budget and find ways to include the citizens and volunteers in a more substantive way. I think that's all I'll say about it tonight.
Councilmember Robinson is right.
Three things. One is in conversations with the chief, it's come to my attention that there's going to be increased enforcement of the dog leash law, leash law. And I just want to make sure that residents are aware of that. I don't think this is particularly connected to the conversation that's happened previously about the dogs in the morning behind Piney Branch School, but more generally people having their dogs off-leash when they're walking them. There's been some complaints and incidents. You know, we do have the leash law for a reason. I know some people feel like their dogs are well behaved, but it's very hard for someone who's walking down the street to tell that. And dogs can react in different ways, different individuals. So I'm generally supportive of the chief's effort to increase the enforcement of the leash law in the city, on our city streets in particular. And I just want to make sure people are aware of that so they're not startled if they do happen to get a ticket. I think the first ticket is $100 if you're caught in that situation. I do also think that it reaffirms our need for a dog park in Tacoma Park, and I know that that's something that we've had a hearing on, and it's on the city staff's agenda to look at and come back to us on with some possible options. I realize we're in the midst of a very tough budget situation, so it may not be the highest priority, but I assume that definitely when the budget time is done, we'll relook at that issue. I look forward to that. The second is a number of residents at the end of, or on this side of Hodges Heights, kind of the end of Grant Avenue, have expressed concern about the basketball court that we've talked about installing, using CGB funds. I know that we've given the okay for that. I think we still don't have the final numbers on what it would cost or exactly the layout. But they're supportive of the basketball court, but they do have concern about supervision. And I know it is right near the Police Department, so there's some thought that that would be helpful. But I think it would be wise for us to think about with the Recreation Department, since it is, in essence, our facility right next to a physical facility, what sort of oversight we're going to provide at that space. And we encourage us, at least when the building is open and we have staff in the building, that there be some routine by which staff members check on the area periodically. And then I think we should also have some decision about, sometime at night eventually, the court would be closed. I know there are some lights, and we've talked about actually being able to have kids continue to play there into the evening, which I'm supportive of also, but I think we should also have some upward boundary. I don't know if it's 9:30 or 10 o'clock or something like that. So I ask you to think about those things, and I'll forward you some emails from the concerned residents. And then last was a question about whether we've got any news back from, I'm not sure if it's the state or the feds, around snow removal reimbursement. I know that there's the potential for up to 75% of the cost of the snow removal. I'm not sure if it's the overages over what was budgeted or just in general. I'm just wondering if we've heard anything from the state or the county or the federal government. I know the state and the county sometimes have a tendency to forget about municipalities and their need for things like this. We have snow just like everybody else, so.
Things tend to move rather slowly. They're actually collecting information for the December snowstorm, and coincidentally, Councilmember Wright, we have a meeting this week with a representative from FEMA to go over the data that we've gathered. So there's not been the opportunity yet for the February storm.
Okay. Great. Thank you. But it's on our radar screen.
You bet.
Great.
Councilmember Quayle?
Start with Long Branch Sligo. The Housing and Community Development Department was looking at the Safe Routes to School project relative to some activity in Long Branch Sligo, and discussion continues about that on the listserv. And I actually spent some time this weekend talking to some folks about it and kind of walking the neighborhood and everything. And I saw some email traffic between our Housing and Community Development Department and a couple of the people there looking for information. And I think there's kind of a tension between the fact that there's not that much information available. And we did, I think, the right thing and put out the information that we had, and now there's stress because there's not more information. So I just would like to reiterate that it might be helpful if we could set a date for when we're going to talk to them about it, and that the date be sooner rather than later, because we were talking about a summer meeting, but I think a spring meeting might be more appropriate. So that would be great. While I was there talking to the folks, also met with a group of people talking about how to develop more participation from the community and finding good mechanisms for people to do that. And we talked about maybe doing a block captain program or other kinds of activities on Long Branch Sligo. But one of the things that we talked about was kind of the challenge of continuing support. Long Branch Sligo also has a fair number of apartments along Flower Avenue and people that they have some trouble getting access to. I wondered, thinking about in Word 6, how we used a small grant to provide some support there, if it might behoove us to just put a budget line in our budget for the neighborhood associations, something, you know, like maybe something worth 50 cents a person per year, which would be, what, like $9,000 or something like that, that we could divide up among the six wards and kind of, you know, divide up a little bit by how many households. Like I have two neighborhood associations significant in my ward. A little bit of BF Gilbert is along Woodland, but if we could look at it maybe by households so that they could have enough money to pay for printing or something like that. I wasn't suggesting that we pay for parties and things, but we could actually help support their communication mechanisms. I think that's been one of the struggles. They haven't been able to publish a newsletter for quite a while since they lost their sponsor. And so I think that would actually help us, especially when we're talking about how we can promote volunteers and engage people better. And we're looking at changing the structure of the way we do some of the things in government, that it might actually be worthwhile to look at, maybe an investment in that might actually pay dividends essentially in terms of being able to communicate. In front of 403, 404, 413, Boyd?
The one where the two big patches are. Those haven't been filled yet, and I'm just, I wonder if it's cheaper to fill them now than when the holes get bigger. I don't know that much about, I don't know anything about road maintenance. Let me just be clear. I don't know anything about road maintenance, but I just wonder if it's better to fill it while the subsurface is still in normal condition. And I'm just going to put that out there. There's a constituent that's been waiting for a response on, about the corner of Ethan Allen and Jackson, that hasn't received a response yet and was actually looking for a response from you. It is that sort of intractable problem that we have there, that somebody owns that lot. It's zoned residential, and he uses it for a flea market and to store things, and there's those big ugly pipes on it now, and WSSC uses it for a staging ground, and the State Highway Department used it for a staging ground, and they're not supposed to do that, and it's a pain in the neck, and it's a pain in the neck again. Oh, and flea market on the weekends.
The day after that email came in, Councilmember Quayle, I was actually out of town, but forwarded it to the two city departments. I know the Police Department checked that weekend. The gentleman was starting to set up his flea market and was shut down by the chief personally, who happened to be here.
Right.
And the zoning-related issues have been turned over to the county. I can get you that complaint number if you--
Can we just, can you communicate that back to the--
Sure. Sure.
You know who the person is, right?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
That would be really helpful. Thanks.
I got reminded. I would like to urge, this is something I've said before, bicycle riders to obey the laws in Tacoma Park. I saw several going through stop signs. I was hit by a car, those of you who may know this, of a lady who went through a stop sign. Now, it wasn't me going through the stop sign, she went through the stop sign, but it certainly doesn't help when bike riders go through the stop sign. So I urge bike riders to obey the laws, and the police in Tacoma Park will ticket. There was a period when they gave warnings. They're now giving tickets.
Didn't you receive a ticket too?
I did not. I got a warning--
No, you got a warning.
Because I was still in the period when I could get a warning. It's very embarrassing.
I know. That's why I pointed it out for you.
Because it was the chief that stopped me. It was like really bad. Anyway, potholes, since you reminded me of potholes. There's a really growing, I hesitate to call it a pothole, because it's pretty big.
It's a swimming pool.
It's a swimming pool at Maple, Maple Avenue, just before Carroll. And I noticed it because I biked past it. Hopefully, I will continue to go past it, but it's getting pretty big. Thank you.
Sounds like it might be in the district.
No, no, it's actually in Tacoma Park. It's not Maple Street, it's still Maple Avenue, just before Carroll.
The line, though, runs just, is like a block in.
It's a little stone.
Is it half a block?
Yeah.
It's a little marker stone right there on your right as you're going uphill.
I'm so sorry.
Because I've walked by that, and I did mention it to Sarah Green and Faith, but we could email and mail together to get a resolution.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Then we will move to the next item, which is, I'll just mention a couple of things about scheduling updates on agendas. We don't have any additional agenda items for tonight, but I did want to say that tonight starts our budget work session process, and that will continue for a couple of weeks. Monday, next Monday, April 19th, we have Ward Five Night.
Yes.
And--
Please come out.
And then followed by a presentation from the police on 2009 crime statistics, a couple of items, and then budget work session on the police and speed camera fund. And in addition, something that I think we're going to add at the end of next week's agenda is an update on the Sligo Park Hills and Richie Citizens Association traffic process. We were expecting to hear something from the county. They were supposed to have a decision by Saturday, and the deputy city manager was expecting to hear something today, get a draft of that. We're anticipating that, she didn't get it, we're anticipating that that will come this week, and that we will want to be discussing that draft report on Monday night.
Next Monday night?
Monday night, yes. And then Thursday next week, April 22nd, the budget work session will include Housing and Community Development, Public Works Department, Stormwater, and the State Highway Administration Proposal Regarding Streets. And I think I will kind of stop saying what's going to happen at that point, because the following Monday, the 26th, is when we're trying to rearrange some things. So I'll just take it that far. And so the next item on the agenda is public comment period, and this is a chance for anybody who would like to speak to anything that is not the subject of a public hearing tonight, not a regular meeting agenda item with voting, because you've got opportunities to speak at a public hearing and the regular meeting items. So it would be to speak about anything that is on the budget work session agenda tonight or anything that's not on the agenda at all. So if anybody would like to do so, please go to the podium, identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
How are you doing? I'm Dave Burbank. As you notice, there's a number of union employees here, and we're here to talk a little bit about our reaction to the proposed budget. I just want to quickly introduce Debbie Irwin and her three beautiful kids. Debbie Irwin is a library shelve, lifelong resident of Tacoma Park and the wife of Tacoma Park Police Officer. Her position is one that's proposed to be eliminated entirely. Now, this is a position that costs the city $12,000, but the amount of work that she puts in includes things that are not on her normal work hours, like building displays for the kids, or she brought in the fishbowl that keeps the kids fascinated and quiet. But the thing is, in eliminating any positions, you end up increasing the workload on everybody else. If she were not accurately putting the books in place and you had to, I don't know, get volunteers or something to make up for those hours, the mission of the library would be significantly impacted. I wanted to just mention her first because I know her kids have bedtime and the baby might start squalling. So just so that Debbie gets an opportunity to duck out, that at least you've gotten to be able to put a face to what to you might seem like, well, this is a hard thing that has to be done. This is a matter of just putting food into happy, wonderful kids who need, you know, everything that they can get, and it doesn't save the city all that much to eliminate that one job. And in fact, there are a number of other cuts and work that could be done by the city that would prevent these sorts of things from having to happen, cutting and eliminating jobs in one of the worst economies in decades. For instance, one of the reasons that was given for why we should be eliminating positions, for instance, was that there was an increased cost in health care. Well, union employees actually contribute to, towards family health care. My understanding is that management positions right now do not contribute to family health care, and that if management positions did contribute to the cost of family health care, then positions like Debbie's or the two union positions that were cut to half-hours, that shortfall could actually be made up right there, no problem. Last week, you received the city's proposed budget. We received it a couple days afterwards. And we just wanted to talk on that for a moment. It said that years ago, the city asked us to switch to a pay-for-performance system, that if you worked really hard, the city would pay you. Now, the system works better for management positions that could be a little bit more creative about setting up their own goals. If you're a sanitation worker, you can't decide how much garbage is going to be on the street, nor decide how much you can actually pick up. But this year, we were actually slammed with a 100-year storm, and for 18 days straight, our guys were on the plow for 24 hours a day. Some of you know that, that you were there seeing the actual work that they did. It's possible that maybe this year, out of all of the years, some of our guys might have qualified for that pay-for-performance increase. But instead, we find that this year, they won't even get a basic market increase. If the cost of their driving to work and buying gas goes up, if the cost of heating their house goes up, they suffer a shortfall. We heard, it's spoken a little bit last week, about how, you know, some part of the shortfall has to do with the stock market. Well, the stock market has actually taken an increase, an increase, an upturn. And I heard you all speak to some extent a little bit about that, you know, you didn't need to know, you didn't need Bob, for instance, to remind you, because all of you, you know, know your stock portfolio has taken a little bit of a hit. But our guys who are riding the trucks, frankly, are not able to go home and check their computer and check their stocks. Most of them, many of them, might be living paycheck to paycheck. And if they can't make the cost of filling their gas tank or pay for their heat, it's much more of a significant hit for them.
If you could wrap up your comments?
Hmm?
Can you wrap up your comments?
Sure, I can wrap them. Essentially, I'm going to let the rest of the guys talk to some extent for themselves, but I just need you guys to understand, I wanted the council to understand, and to take a look at that, and to look at what might amount to perhaps $400,000 in total increase in salaries, when the city carries a strategic reserve of 6 to 8 million. And that if there's any year where you could say, okay, look, this is a rainy day fund, well, we just got hit with significant, serious storms, and this year, of all years, you might look at actually funding a basic cost of living, a basic market increase for the people who are working for the city of Tacoma Park. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? And remember, we've got a public hearing on the budget, so, you know, you can speak at that.
Hi. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Herb T. Money, and I work in Public Works. During the recent snowstorm, I worked for 18 days straight. One of those days, even the mayor rode with me and was amazed at the hard work that we do. As a result of our labor, the city of Tacoma Park had the cleanest streets in Maryland. Now, on the proposed budget, we're not allowing me to get a market adjustment, which is based on my performance. It's not fair that I still will work hard for the citizens of the city, but would not see my market adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good afternoon, city councilmen.
Good afternoon, city councilmen. I'm Liz James. I'm representing the Tacoma Park Crossing Guards. We, the Crossing Guards, we are working out there in all kinds of weather, the cold, the rain, the snow. We get sick. Not once did I get a call this year of anybody being sick and had to be taken to the hospital or anything. We came to work sick. We're not just out there for the fun of it, we're out there for the children and for the pedestrians as well. You're talking about taking our rate, pay raise from us and also our health insurance. We have families that we have to feed, we have to take care of. The cost of gas is going up, we have to have automobiles to get to and from work. We need to do various things that's concerning the citizens and the people of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Court. I also work for public works. During the snowstorm, which is a major, I think councilman Wright, you rode with me for a few hours. And I think riding in my shoes for a few hours, I think you kind of get a firsthand look at not only what I do, but how the residents rely on what I do. This will be one of the years that I would have, that I would have thought that, you know, the city of Tacoma Park would say, well, for the job that you guys do this year, you know, we'll take care of you. But it seemed like it's like the opposite way. Market adjustments, we are, we depend on that. And also our pay raise. We work not only for ourselves, but we take care of this city. This is one of the finest cities within the whole of Maryland. We ride, most of us do not live in Tacoma Park. We live outside of Tacoma Park. And when we ride outside of Tacoma Park, we, especially me, I'm a crew leader, I know what I have to come back and do. Because even in my area, I'm like, okay, this is not what I want. So I ride my guys especially hard to perform over and above what is written for their evaluation or whatever. So I'm asking the council for the rate adjustment and for our pay raises. We depend on that. We, we have families just like you guys. So I'm asking you guys for, just to reward us and to take into consideration the work that we do for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Lysia, and I'm actually here on the behalf of someone else. I have a coworker who just learned that her healthcare costs would be going up, that no market adjustments would be made in the budget, and that her hours were going to be cut in half. She explained this to her family, and she has a daughter who's actually in college, who gave a suggestion that she would plan on dropping out of school since her mother can no longer afford it. So I'm just asking you guys to not adopt a budget that would make hard-working employees have to make these type of choices.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Asher Weller, and I work up in public works. And first, I want to say thank you to all of you for working on the budget. I've never had to be in your situation, and I have no idea what it's like to have to be making the decisions that you're making. And I respect the job that you're doing, and I thank you for the job that you're doing. And I came to Tacoma Park about 16 years ago, and I fell in love with this place. And it wasn't much longer after that that I moved several states over to live here. And I brought my daughter. And I've lived in Tacoma Park ever since. And somehow, I've managed to make ends meet doing different kinds of jobs throughout the city and elsewhere. And when I got a job for the city, I have to say, I'm very grateful. I love working where I live, and I love being able to take care of its gardens. And quite honestly, I thought, wow, this is great. I live in the city I work in, and I'm set, I'll be taken care of. And it wasn't long ago that I found out that despite the quality of work that I do at my job, I will not receive a distinguished evaluation. It is not possible, it is not given in the division where I work. It simply does not happen. My performance evaluations, for as long as I hold this position, will be average, regardless of how hard I work. I know people who have been working in public works for many, many years, some of them decades. They're losing their hearing, their knees are going bad, they're literally giving themselves to the city. And I saw them hear any complaints about it. And I realized that this is a tough economic time. And I realize that you have hard decisions to make. Please just don't forget the people that are easy to be made invisible. Okay? We're here, and we work really, really hard. And most of us can't afford to live here. And if I lose the apartment that I've lived in for 14 years, I won't be able to keep living in this city. And know that I'm grateful for what I have, and that would be a loss because this is a beautiful place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Chrisler. Like you, I work hard for the citizens of Tacoma Park. Ask yourself, how would you feel if you were told that even though your salary is based on performance, you would not be getting an increase, regardless of how hard you work and how well you perform? This is unfair, and I ask that you amend the budget to include adjustments in the final budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Bomani Jones. I represent Public Works Sanitation Department. We are task workers. We don't stop until it's done. Whatever the climate, rain or snow, we are out there providing excellent service. When we are sick or physically impaired, we are out there providing excellent service. When there is conflict, like heated arguments or strong disputes amongst each other, we are still out there providing excellent service. The residents of Tacoma Park, they love our service, our excellent service. We are task workers. We don't stop. So we ask that the market adjustable rate won't stop. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak? Okay. Let me just say that I really appreciate all of you coming tonight and sharing your concerns with this. As some of you have acknowledged, it's a really tough budget year, and we have some tough decisions ahead of us. But it's very helpful to have you all here and to be reminded of the difficulties that you face, but also the great work that you do for us and for the people of the city of Tacoma Park. And know that no matter what we decide with the budget, that we really appreciate what you do and wish that we could do more, no matter what we end up deciding on the budget. So appreciate your coming here and just glad that you took this opportunity to talk to us. City manager, have any comments?
No, just want to let the council know that the auditorium project is moving along very well. I had asked Sarah Dane to work with the Arts and Humanities Commission and some community members on some opening celebration events, and I'll be getting some information out to the council later this week.
Okay, we'll move along to the public hearing on the city manager's proposed FY11 budget. I just wanted to remind folks that this is the first public hearing on the budget. There's also going to be a second hearing on May 10th, after the council has had a chance to go over the budget. And that reminding folks that the tax rate will be set on May 17th, 24th. That's the proposal at this point. And we have to have it, we have to have the budget set and the tax rate set and to the county by May 31st. So basically, we have the rest of April and May to go through this process. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at the official public hearing for the proposed budget? Make sure people are leaving rather than heading to the podium. Okay. Was there a sign up? Did anybody sign up? I just want to double-check and make sure. Right, right.
This is the...
This is the budget public hearing.
Budget public hearing, okay. Just to make sure that I'm in the right category. Diana Cohn, 16 Jefferson Avenue. I'm here as president of Historic Tacoma. As you know, Historic Tacoma's purchase of the Barcelona Nets Building in September 2006 makes us a key player in the economic redevelopment of the Tacoma Junction, which is currently receiving considerable city attention. I am here tonight on behalf of Historic Tacoma to ask the council's support in the 2011 budget for our remaining renovation efforts so we can open the building. The space had been vacant for most of the 25 years until we took ownership, and we are bringing it back into community use. Thanks to $485,000 from the county and the state, we were able to purchase the building outright. In addition, we have spent more than $200,000 for renovations. With the help of individual donations to Historic Tacoma, more than matching the state, county, and city funds, that's $40,000 from the city. Two years ago, we signed an MOU with the city as part of a public-private partnership to create community space at the junction, not only for Historic Tacoma's historical records, but also as a place for the public to gather. We are excited about opening the building and moving forward with our partnership with the city. But we need your support to take the last steps. The major project being a handicap-accessible bathroom that we need to open a building. Toward that end, we are requesting you, the council, a $10,000 allocation from the 2011 budget. Meanwhile, we're continuing our fundraising efforts with the house and garden tour and sponsorships and various things associated with that event. On Sunday, April 25th, we will be open for the Earth Day at the junction. And we invite all of you on the council and the staff and residents to join us in the building, stop by, see for yourselves the remarkable transformation that's going on there. And with your help, in terms of budget assistance, we hope that it will spark a transformation of the junction itself. That's it.
Thank you.
Questions?
Anybody else want to testify at the budget public hearing? Okay. I call the budget public hearing closed. We will now go to the constant yield tax rate hearing. And I'll just remind folks again that the, there's a particular language that had to be, that had to go into the publication for this hearing. It can be very confusing. But essentially, what it boils down to is that if the city maintains the current tax rate of 58 cents per hundred of assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by 2.4%, resulting in $258,044 of new real property tax revenues. And in order to offset the effect of that, the real property tax rate would be reduced to 56.63 cents, which is the constant yield tax rate. Which is, the reason for this hearing is if we go over, if we end up with a tax rate above 56.63 cents, we have to advertise and make sure that people know what that situation is. We also have to make it clear at this hearing that if we're not going to set the tax rate this evening, that we are going to set the tax rate, and the proposed dates for the, are May 17th and May 24th. Would anybody like to testify at the constant yield public hearing? Okay. I don't think anybody wants to testify at the constant yield public hearing. So I'll call the constant yield public hearing to a close. We will now move to our regular meeting items. And the first item is second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Title VI Housing. And this is the, this is the 48-hour notice, right? And so this is second reading. We've had a fair amount of discussion on this over the last couple of months, and we have first reading.
Move the ordinance.
Thank you. Move by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Snipper. Is there any council comment on this? Are you sure?
Okay, I'll take it back. I will, I would just say, I will be watching carefully to see how this works out. Because I have a concern which I expressed before, and I'll just be keeping an eye on how this works out. That's all I want to say.
We'll count on that. Is there any public comment on the second reading ordinance? Okay. Seeing none, since this is the second reading, will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the second reading ordinance amending the stormwater management code. We've had a fair amount of discussion on this as well. We also talked about whether the, any potential changes by the state legislature might affect this. The compromise that was worked out was finally adopted by the legislature. So that has now closed any, any potential things that might have happened up through midnight tonight. So there won't be any further action by the state on that, so we're ready to go ahead in second reading. Somebody like to introduce it?
Move.
Move by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Snipper. Is there any council comment on this second reading ordinance? Is there any public comment on the second reading ordinance revising the city's stormwater management code? Okay, seeing none. Second reading ordinance, will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We will now proceed to the budget work session. And the first section that we're going to talk about is general government, including general management, legislative, legal, city clerk, finance, information systems, and human resources. And I believe the city manager is going to lead the presentation discussion on that one.
Yeah, while I'm talking, I guess all the heads of the various divisions can come on up to the table in case the council has some questions. Overall, the general government department, as proposed for FY11, is about $108,000 lower than the budget for FY10. The primary reasons for that are a proposed decrease in full-time equivalents of 1.5% as proposed, or it would be an elimination of a management assistant position in my office, as well as a restructuring of a full-time position to part-time also in my office in that position as an administrative assistant one. So that's the primary reason for the decrease from FY10 to FY11. One of the other changes also has to do with the fact that the, this year, we had the 2009 Tacoma Park resident survey. Obviously, that was a non-recurring cost for FY11. Obviously, that was a nonrecurring cost for FY11. I can touch a little bit on the legal budget. It, as you may have noted, it's proposed to be up slightly from FY10, and that's due to a number of factors. One is we will have some continued work on the updating of the city's personnel policies and procedures, and Karen can touch on that in just a few moments. We would anticipate that there would be continued legal work related to the Washington Adventist Hospital's certificate of need process. There will actually be a, a site visit on April 19th with the Healthcare Commission, and Suzanne and I will both be participating on that site visit, just as an observer. And there is obviously the possibility that there may be continued negotiations with Ask Me Pass July 1st. Mayor, if it's all right, I'll just have some of the other folks come-
Let me just check and make sure, are there any questions to this point? Councilmember Snipper?
Yes, I have a general observation, which I made last year, which is that in most cases the expenditures are less, in some cases quite a bit less, than what was in the adopted budget. And I, again, make the observation that, to me, good budgeting would be a mixture of over and under for the different departments. I don't mean it just for the general government, I mean throughout, throughout the thing. And so to me, it seems like we planned to spend more money than we ended up spending, and there are two possibilities here. One is that activities that the council wished to take place did not, and that might be because there were staff vacancies or for other reasons, but that's, that's one kind of item. Or the other is that we overestimated the expenditures and therefore had a higher tax rate than we needed to to cover it, or we built up a reserve. All of these things have, to me, unfortunate consequences. So I would prefer, as I said before, to take some kind of adjustment across the board on overall average, I don't know what you want to call it, to account for the fact that we routinely, it seems like, spend less than we budget. I know this is a controversial suggestion, I made it last year, didn't make any headway, I'll make it again, just for the record. The other very small question I have is on the section, division, legislative?
Yes.
Okay. The, under the F11 budget highlights, it says, "Members of the city council are appointed officials and are therefore," et cetera. I thought we were elected.
That's typical, obviously.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Two, two comments. I want to support Councilmember Snipper's comment, and if you actually look at the entire budget, we spent, when you look at the end-of-the-year balance, we raised $2.6 million higher than we anticipated being for the entire budget, and this was like, Councilmember Snipper, an issue I raised last year, and I just want to conflag. I realize that in the proposed budget, we're actually going down to seven, to have a end-of-the-year balance of 7.4 million. But if you, I didn't do it yet this year, I've done it in the past. If you go back and look at previous budget documents, and you compare estimated versus the actual, sorry, the adopted versus the audited, it ranges from, I think, like, a million dollars to $2 million that were consistently what I would call over-budgeting. And so I would hope that based on all these cuts we're making, and as you've heard today, you know, pain we're causing to real individuals, that we don't end up at what would be $9 million at the end of the year next year, as opposed to the 7.4 that's proposed here at the end of the year fund balance. And I realize, like Councilmember Snipper, that that number, some of it has to do with things we decide not to spend money on or get deferred, but when it's consistent like that every year, it raises concern to me about the budgeted, you know, how accurate we are in our budgeting. And at the end of the day, basically what we're doing is holding residents' money. And if we have a good purpose for that money, if we want to, if we feel like we need to build up reserves, or we're going to pay down debt, or we're going to do something, that's one thing, but just to hold it for the sake of, of not doing a better job in terms of the accuracy of our budgeting, that, I'm uncomfortable with that. So I just put that out there, that probably will be a theme that comes up again. When I look at the general, the second point I want to make is I think, and I know some of my other colleagues have expressed concern about this in the past also, I realize a lot of our costs are associated with staff time. So if you look at then, in the general government, if you look in the, the expenditure breakdown by type, you see that 1.6 of the 2.4, so well over half, is really in wages or fringe benefits. It's really the cost of staff, but there's still a chunk, you know, almost $700,000 that is in other stuff. And so I think we deserve to have a little bit more of a breakdown, kind of clearly articulated in some of these gross numbers, and not having to like delve down and read text or look into the departmental detail too much. And so, you know, I get it, $35,000 spent on supplies, I don't want to know how many pencils we're, we're, we're buying, but we are spending almost $600,000 on services and charges and $150,000 on miscellaneous. And I do think it would be good if there could be a way for us to see the bigger expenditures in there. Yes, I can flip back and say, okay, I see that services and charges, you know, $78,000 is in the general services, sorry, general management, and a big chunk of it's in the IT, right? So that's probably some sort of IT contract, $134,000. But I think it would be very helpful to people, not only us, to us, but to residents, if we could have a little more breakdown on some of these big expenditure categories or types. Now, in some places you may see that the service charge or the miscellaneous is miniscule. I wouldn't suggest that we have a further breakdown there, but I do think where those numbers are either a significant percentage of the budget or just significant, you know, large, that we, it would be nice to be able to kind of clearly delineate what's going into that.
What, and we can certainly reformat this. What is included on the agenda cover sheet was an attempt to break that down by functional categories, so that is also broken down by division. If the council has, each of the division sheets will show expenditures by category and provide some description of what is included in that. The council has some ideas in terms of how we can more clearly delineate that to, to you and to the public, certainly would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think it's there. And I think, and I'm as much concerned for the public, because you do have to dig to kind of figure it out and do all the math to make it make sense. So it seems like maybe just some additional line for simple breakdowns about what's, what constitutes those numbers. That would be my question.
Anything else you wanted to?
The other thing I just wanted to mention that may be helpful is if you, probably an easy snapshot is to look at page seven of the transmittal message, and what that will reflect is that one of the, the largest variances between FY10 as budgeted and proposed is over $2 million in the capital outlay, which is the fact that the Public Works facility is not moving forward. Page seven of the transmittal message will show you by department where those variances are, and that's certainly pretty much the largest variance. I think the variance in the general government department between budget and estimated is about 1.7%.
Councilmember Schultz?
Could we just like to, once again, voice support for the, Mr. Wright's request for more detail in some areas of the budget. I know this is something that's come up several times in the past, I know the city manager has been responsive, I remember last year, some supplemental information she gave us and, and some of the detail we can find in the document, but I would like to suggest that the mayor maybe puts a discussion of this on the budget, on the budget, on the agenda for future budget years, that maybe we can discuss in some detail what we would really like to see in the budget.
Let me just check on something. My sense is that, tell me, tell me if I'm wrong, that some of the concern is that some of the detail that has been provided in the cover sheet tonight for the work session, people feel should be in the budget document itself, rather than people having to look in this document and then wondering where it is, not knowing to look at the cover sheet for the particular item in the discussion. Is that inaccurate?
I think that's part of it. I think there are some other items that have been brought up in the past where we would like a little bit more detail, and, and I know it's always difficult at this point in the budget process to have a budget proposal in front of us and then say, no, we want to see something different. So I think it would be helpful after this budget cycle is over for the council to maybe be clearer on what we would like to see in next year's budget proposal.
So it sounds like a process where it would be good for everybody to keep their list of particular items that would be most helpful, so that when we have that discussion, we can pull those lists together.
May I ask a question? I'm just asking, I'm just going to pick human resources, and, and what I'm hearing is that perhaps the way the information is presented is not the way the council would like, but we tried, like, for example, on the division page for human resources, there is a description of roughly 97% of what is in that budget.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to give any examples tonight.
Yeah, I'm just going to get a sense of how to best respond to the concern, and I'm not sure I'm, I'm getting that-
I'm suggesting that you don't need to tonight, but-
Well, we want to make sure that you have the information you need to, to read about it.
I think you'll probably get specific requests through the budget process.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Councilmember Schultz?
It says that we spend something like $45,000 a year on memberships in the Maryland Municipal League and the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments.
Those are not the only ones, Councilmember Schultz, but those are by far the most expensive in that category.
What do we, what do we, what is our dues to the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments? Does anybody know offhand?
I want to say $10,000.
I think it's more than that. What I'd be happy to do, Councilmember Schultz, rather than speculate, is I can certainly just look that up tomorrow and send that out to the council. Be happy to do that.
Well, I'm just, you know, I've, in my role here, I have a responsibility to attend their meetings and go down to their offices and read their publications, and I realize that whatever it is and proportion to the total budget is miniscule. But today, in the mail, I received the, some sort of a project plan or annual report from the, from the organization, and it was probably, the way it was bound, the way it was designed, the color, every aspect of it is probably one of the most expensive publications I've ever laid my eyes on. It's absolutely gorgeous. But I was, and I think about the offices that that organization occupies, I won't say that they're palatial, but they are very large, and I, it's just frustrating to me, when all of us municipalities are struggling to pay people to do the work that needs to be done, that these kind of super, this, an organization like this Council of Governments seems to be probably immune. I'm sorry. I had this thing covered up. Actually, I didn't really want the public to hear what I was saying. I, it just, just, just bothers me, and, and of course, we can't not belong to the Washington Council of Governments, but it seems to me there needs to be some sensitivity at their end, that these are hard times, and it sort of feels like that that doesn't get through. So that's one, this is just a general comment, it's not directed to you, Barbara, by any means. It, I, it just seems odd, just the strange juxtaposition of seeing this very elaborate publication coming out, which serves no real purpose other than propaganda for the organization, and it's being done at the expense of us. So, thank you.
If I can just weigh in briefly, I think what Councilmember Schultz was referring to was the member directory that came out, because I know we just received that, and I know that's a scaled-down version and a combined, combination of both the membership directory and kind of what the organization is up to, and I would beg to differ with Councilmember Schultz's.
The thing is shaped to look like a, a smart telephone.
Yes, it looks like a peanut. It's, I, I find that organization very valuable, and I think our dues are a fairly small amount for the benefit that we get out of that, and I know that they've made great strides in recognizing the times that we're in. They've reduced staff, they've reduced overhead, they've cut out a number of things that they have done that have been very valuable, both for the city and for the region, and I don't, I don't want to get into casting aspersions at what they're doing.
I don't mind, I'll be at the board meeting this week, and I don't mind passing along the, the concern to the director, so he can take that into consideration as he does the other comments.
Councilmember Wright?
I had two questions. One is sparked by some of what we heard from union members, and so I'm curious, do the managers, I'm not talking about the city manager, because I know that the city council deals with the conversation related to city managers, but are the managers in the general government area, are they awarded a raise, either cost of living or performance raise, in the coming year?
No. I assume Councilmember Wright is, it would be across the board, including myself.
Great, thank you.
There was still a question there about whether management pays the family, something about the family.
To health insurance for families.
That was the practice when I arrived, and that is still the practice.
So there's a difference between the health insurance benefits for union members versus management?
The, the health insurance plan is the same. My understanding, when I got here, is obviously the management employees are not eligible for overtime as exempt employees, and my understanding is that past city managers, I don't know how far back the practice goes, had made some accommodation in light of that.
I would be interested in knowing what the city would say if we chose to make the benefits package related to healthcare the same between management and union. It sounds like it's mainly just the family piece, but I'd be curious to, I know you don't know that number off the top of your head.
No, I'm sorry.
I'd be curious to know what that, that number is. And then the last question has to do with IT. I noticed the service charges are going up significantly, I noticed in the notes that that's associated with software upgrades, but I'm just, I'm sort of curious if the, I know like construction costs in tighter economic times, there's often opportunities to rebid contracts or even to go back and negotiate contracts, even though they haven't expired yet, so I'm just curious on the information technology side, whether we availed ourselves of that opportunity to, to push our vendors a bit on pricing in this tougher economic times. I would tell you the page number, but there's no page number in here, so.
If the council would be open to it, there are actually several items in the IT budget that I was hoping Abel could go over and bring to your attention, and that was one of them, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the increases is in the lineup of contracts, and we are planning to do a network security assessment and implement some of the recommendations, and that's something that our auditors suggested and have requested that we do. So that, for budgetary figures, we counted on about $30,000. So that, for budgetary figures, we counted on about $30,000. That's a big bulk of that. And then we've, since we're doing more things on the internet, we're doing more with our financial software, we're incurring more maintenance costs on that software. That's probably the bulk of the increase there.
I think the other question, Councilmember Wright, that you asked, has to do with any work that is being done by the vendor. Obviously, like most governments, you're going to have one primary software vendor that's going to handle a variety of things. They are handled as a sole source procurement. That's not to say we can't continue to push on their pricing, but because of the nature of the software, it is proprietary, you cannot have other people work on it and still maintain the warranties.
Yeah, no, I get that. I was thinking more about pushing them on the vendors. And I assume we do some outsourcing of the data systems and hosting of servers and that sort of stuff, yeah?
We don't outsource that many servers. We are doing some cloud computing, but it's the recreation module. And I think housing is going to start doing that soon, too. But there is some possibilities of negotiating with, we purchase software and things like that on a state contract. And so we rely on, we piggyback on what they're doing, so there might be some cost saving there. Again, I think the bulk of the increase there is just going to be those two things that I outlined. The other things don't change much, because you're always going to be buying so many network licenses, you're always going to be buying so many word processing maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, I have a question, since we opened up the IT.
Oh, boy.
It's related to an environmental concern and cost-saving concern. The federal government, at least some of the departments, have switched from a three-year refresh rate to a five-year refresh rate for desktop computers. And it's out of both environmental concerns, because there's a lot of, you know, those things are hard to recycle. And I noticed that we do it on a four-year schedule. Nice compromise. But I'm hoping that you have thought about these issues and that you're comfortable with the, what would I call it, the balance between keeping the machines up to date and working without ending up spending more time fixing the darn things than they're really worth. Because as they start getting older, things break. You know, the power supply gives out, or the graphics card poops out, or the motherboard, or something that costs a lot of money to fix, time and money to fix. So there's clearly a balance point. And I'm just more asking about, you know, have you given that thought?
That's a good comment. We do the four-year because, yeah, it's a compromise. But we're doing in addition to the four-year, we're also not replacing, are not always replacing the video, the monitor. The monitor is okay, and it's already energy compliant. We don't do that, we just do the CPU. So, again, another compromise. In fact, I think only half of the systems we replaced this year received also a monitor. So that's another thing that we're doing.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember White?
I have a question about cell phones. You see, we're supporting 65 cell phones. Seems like a lot of cell phones. My federal entity has over 500 employees, and we have a limit of 85 cell phones.
You'll find that the bulk of our cell phones are in the police department. A lot of those folks are mobile.
I know, I see them driving around talking on their cell phones.
Yeah, I know. They're going to not be able to do that if Maryland passes that darn thing. I hope they pass it.
That's not your problem, though.
When we do that, also, it makes those people available. So I think, based on the city manager's request when we issue those, it's not just anybody that wants one, it's a way of getting, you know. If you have a cell phone, you're also going to be on-call.
I do have a cell phone, it's in my pocket. I have two cell phones, because I have my federal cell phone and my city cell phone.
And if you want to, he will be here next Monday, if you'd like to talk to him about --
Well, I'm not actually that concerned about the police department. However, I tell you, I would love to just have one cell phone. If I could, if I could get a deal where I could pay one or the other, and like, you know, so I only had to carry one device, between the federal government paying for me to have this cell phone, which probably costs, I don't know, $85, $90 a month, and the city pays for me to have this cell phone and data device, which probably costs $85 a month. And I probably, I don't use either one of them for more than 20 minutes a month, except in, unless there's a disaster or something. In the snowstorm, I used probably a lot of my minutes during the snowstorm, but I didn't have to. I tried to get the federal government to just let me use my personal cell phone, but they wouldn't let me. And I just, I wonder for how many people that might be true, too, that they have to carry a personal cell phone that they pay 85 bucks on, and might be just as happy to have to pay 40 bucks on their cell phone bill and split the savings, and cheaper for them and be cheaper for us. And then you, I have to have two, I have two different USB cables, so I can't even have one charger for my two cell phones.
So do you have a third cell phone, or is your personal one one of those?
No, I don't have a third cell phone. I don't talk on the phone that much on the cell phone, unless you call me or my kid calls me. So no, I don't have a third one, for God's sakes. Then I'd be spending $300 for 20 minutes of cell phone time a month.
I have an important thing to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Under the Freedom of Information Act, if you do federal business on a private phone, under Freedom of Information Act, it's potentially foible. That is, they could take that phone until they have, they have decided that it doesn't contain any information. It's very rare that it happens. But that's why they, that's one of the reasons why they keep these things separate. You're supposed to do federal stuff on federal equipment, and, you know, city stuff likewise could be foible.
Those legal reports.
I mean, you could really get, yeah, I mean, I worry about my laptop, man, because they could keep it for months until they figure out what the --
Interesting. Since they have us all work at home and use our personal computers, they didn't tell me that.
I know.
Now they're going to have to give me a second federal computer for my home. But anyway, you see my point.
There's great unrest down here at the course of the discussion there. Take it to the feds.
Right.
Any other comments at this point? Is there some other things that you all want to tell us?
There's barely any change at all in the HR budget, but I thought while Karen was here, it might be helpful for her just to take a few minutes and to give the council an update on the Internet project that you had heard about in prior budget discussions, and just kind of where things stand with the personnel policy review.
With the Internet project, we finally purchased the software. We worked with the IT department to purchase the software. And we finally have a link on the city's webpage where the employees can access and get information about their personal information, or they can make changes about their personal information, like they address their phone number, or their exemptions and things like that. We are looking forward to FY11 to put policies on their pay scales, other information that the employees may want to see. With regards to the policies, you asked us to review and update and streamline our policies with regards to city policies, codes, and our practices. And we have been consulting with our specialized counsel, personal attorney with this. And we have met, we've looked over the policies, they've given us some suggestions, some things that we need to include as part of those policies, some things we probably need to take out because they're old. They are working on updating those things. They're going to come back to the city manager, as well as the management staff. We'll look at it as a whole, finish making the changes, and then hopefully, we will get them out to the employees. We believe that this process will probably continue into FY11.
And you brought up something, and I was looking for it as I went through this, and I don't remember seeing it, maybe I missed it. Where does the specialized legal counsel show up in this?
In the legal level.
Did you miss it?
And I, because I was looking there, and I didn't see that, it looked like the numbers stayed about the same, and there was mention of Silver and Pearlman, but there wasn't mention, didn't see of the specialized. Because it looked like it was just, you know, comparing '09 and '11, it's basically the same number.
There is. If you will recall, for the past couple of years, we have spent, I guess, two years ago, we spent a considerable amount of money on inventory development. In the current fiscal year, there was a lot of work done by Silver and Pearlman related to Washington Adventist Hospital. Obviously, that will continue into next year. But on balance, between the items I mentioned earlier, the continued work on the personnel policy review, potential negotiations with ASME continuing into FY11, and just kind of general personnel matters that on par, the budget will be roughly even.
Okay.
It's just trade-offs in terms of what work is continuing in any particular fiscal year.
That's fair, where I could hopefully have more detail, just to have a breakdown of the legal, like, if we're paying, what we're paying our general counsel versus specialized counsel.
Yeah, we're projecting for FY11, and certainly we can provide that. We're projecting to spend probably $30,000 on specialized counsel, and then about $185,000 in other legal matters. The rest of the budget are some provisions for membership dues and things like that that we do for Silver and Pearlman as part of their contract.
Okay, yeah. The call-out figure you just gave was what I was looking for. That wasn't in here. Councilmember Robinson?
Back to HR, we heard some pretty strong opinions from Public Works and other employees about hurt that's going to happen if, in their case, with lack of raises and merit increases. And I wonder if, and also, I'm sensitive to Councilmember Schultz's sense of money being spent at the high end of things that, so I guess what I'm thinking of is, to what extent did you look at the degree of hurt, if that's a way to put it, between the high-end salaries and the low-end salaries? Is there a percentage hit that the low end is going to take that's because of the scaling of things, that's going to be, hurt them more than the folks at the high end? That's really what I'm getting.
The council wishes to continue this line of discussion, is that this is a matter of labor negotiations, and I don't believe it's appropriate to be discussing those matters in public. So if the council would like to have the opportunity to talk about some of these issues, given that we are in union negotiations, I suggest that the mayor schedule a closed session for that discussion to take place.
That's good. Well, I hope that we'll get analysis in that regard.
Sure. If there's any other information the council would like, just please shoot me an email.
If I may, I would like to have Abel maybe walk through the items related to IT that
are in the capital outlay budget. So if you go in the back of your budget binder, go under capital outlay, and there's a copy of the CIP. And the IT items are on page two of that tab.
And so that's a good general reminder that for whatever sections we're going to be reviewing in the work session, go to that section of capital and review it, so that if the questions come up, they come up each time, rather than doing capital all at once.
Correct. I've asked each of the department heads while they are here to cover any items that are included in capital outlay, as well as any items that are in the special revenue funds, if they're not capital items.
So Abel, if you want to go over those?
You want to talk about FY11?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The first item there is the closed-circuit TV, and we're looking at $12,000. That's something that we've wanted to do for a couple of fiscal years now. And this is to upgrade our current equipment that's been online since we occupied the space, basically since 2004. It's the server. And we want to increase our storage capacity on that server and just change the equipment. That equipment is, let's see, if I can give you a perspective. In order to burn any of the captured video for the police department, if they need something, it's on a CD, doesn't even have a DVD burner, it's a CD burner. So that gives you an idea of the age. And if you're doing a four-hour interview that you want to record and give to legal folks for prosecution, you need three or four CDs, basically, to capture the, so that's the idea there.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure I'm on the right item. That's the $12,000 closed-circuit TV?
Yes.
Is it really a server?
Yes.
For the closed-circuit TV system.
We do have, in there, a replacement of a couple of cameras that have died. It's for equipment that, so there is some cameras. We have a limit of 32 locations. There's 32 cameras in the system. We're not going to enhance that, or we're just going to, you know, replace what's there and upgrade the server.
So those are like the cameras around the building here? Do we just put it when the building is built?
Right, right.
Are they primarily security cameras?
They're all security cameras, yeah.
How many?
There's 32 of them that we actually use, that all?
They're all all the time.
How many?
About a fourth of those are in the police department holding cell area.
I wonder how many around the building are, have actually been used to solve any big crimes that we have.
I guess it depends what you consider a big crime. We have had some thefts that have occurred, or vandalism that have occurred both inside the building and outside the building, and they have been viewed and given to the police department as part of any investigation.
And I know I was involved one time with the keys to one of the city cars disappeared, and it was a question of who had them, and they reviewed the cameras to see who had picked them up from the glass.
Did I exonerate you? You weren't guilty.
Are you voting against this?
Boy, good for someone. The next item is for the maintenance of the software at the computer learning center, or the computer center. It's mostly something that the library folks get involved with, but they have a recurring equipment replacement and license replacement, too. I think that's what the 4600 is. This is probably just software maintenance. And there's one next, the following fiscal year, which I think, I'm pretty sure it's equipment replacement. There's, the next item is the fiber connectivity. And what we're doing there, we're trying to use some of the special revenue funds to enhance capability at Public Works. We want to use Public Works, now that it's getting updated, the facility. We want to use it as a possible disaster recovery site, as a possible backup for our software and here at the building. So this would increase the bandwidth, and it allows to push more data over there. Yes?
I just have to raise concern with that versus outsourcing that to a remote location. Because if, Public Works isn't that far away, right? So it saves you from if there's a fire in this building, but if there's something that's more significant that could impact the city and could impact both facilities, it doesn't seem logical that we would, and there's lots of people that outsource that to more remote locations, and it's not usually that expensive to do, actually. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. In addition to just enhancing that, we also want to bring over there the capability to do video conferencing, which is something that we're doing here in the city building. So if we wanted to conduct a video conference over there, this would allow us to do that. We have that connectivity here with the county, because they've put fiber to us here. This would extend it to Public Works. So it's a double, it's a double thing. Yeah, the idea with data is to get it off-site as far as you can, and it would be considerably less than that to do that. This is a one-time cost to get the fiber hanging on the poles, basically, and put the electronics at either end to connect.
So, just so I understand, like, why we're doing it, right? Because it's a chunk of money, right? So you're saying that we're doing this so that we can do some data backup, but that's not the primary reason? We would ideally outsource that anyway to a remote location? And then the second is to have data conference, to have video conferencing at the Public Works facility?
And there's a third one, too.
Okay.
The third one is to enhance our current capabilities and just not have to pay Verizon for data circuits there. This would take the place of our day-to-day connections, which are very, very, well, I know Councilmember Seaman was in that area, and it's just, we have phone problems there, we have a lot of problems with our data circuits there. This would make it our data circuit, not Verizon's data circuit.
I'd pat you into that.
We'll talk after the break. But yeah, this has a lot of benefits and has a daily operational benefit, too. Our voice traffic, our phone calls, the Public Works, go through the existing Verizon circuits, and so does data to them. When that circuit is down, both telephone communication and data communication are out. This would replace that. So we would have some savings. You know, we spend approximately $700 a month to lease Verizon lines. We wouldn't be doing that.
Okay. I guess I'll think about this a little bit more.
Please.
Maybe if you can, just because it's such a big number, if you can just give us a little something in writing that lays out a few more details on that, that would be helpful.
I work with Lonnie on this, the communications person, and it is special revenue, so it's, it's...
So it's not going to...
Yeah, it's a different funding, if I understand.
We'll put something together and get that.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm not sure what the other options are for that funding. And I'd just be curious about how much real video conferencing we're going to be doing at Public Works facility, and for the handful of times that's necessary, would someone come down here to do that? And then the third thing is, like, could we just push Verizon to actually resolve the circuit issue and help many of the residents as well as Public Works at the same time?
Pushing Verizon, well, yes.
Pushing Verizon for a long time.
We could push, yeah.
I have a related question. You touched on it a little bit. I know that our communications budget usually gives the money from public television.
Correct.
And I wonder, is that money paying for some of these, did you say?
Yes.
It would pay for this item.
Okay. And how about, like, the first item, the $12,000 for the closed-circuit TV and servers?
That's an equipment replacement, that's ER, because it's equipment that we have. But, you know, I don't know.
I don't think it means the qualifications.
We can certainly review that.
Look at that, but I don't think it means the qualifications.
Typically, that's money that we have.
We have a lot of that.
We have a lot of more revenue than we have the expenses in that one area.
We'll check that.
Be great. The next item is for the door security and software and hardware. Again, that right there is for replacing servers and workstations that manage that. That equipment has also been online since we moved into the building in 2004. There's a lot of components involved in that system. We have a server and four workstations that talk to the server. There's one in the police. There's one at Public Works. There's one that actually issues our badges, and then there's one in the administration reception area to manage the doors and to program the door entry. And that would replace computer equipment.
And you're going to use the same software?
Same software, yes, yeah.
And it will finally open in Hefner Park.
Hefner Park is working great, right?
Well, last month, I think it was the first time it ever opened on time.
Good to hear it.
Yes. Just in 2004.
Must have to do with those circuits.
Maybe some of that fiber connectivity will help that.
Oh, we could build a Hefner Park for $100,000. No. The final item is the backbone switches, and that's here in the building. What we're trying to do there is increase our bandwidth between the floors and increase our bandwidth to the server so we can get out to the internet and do more of this internet computing that we're doing. More and more, we're relying on the internet for everything. There's more bandwidth requirement for presentation, video. We're doing a lot of our learning, or a lot of conferences and things that we would go to, we're actually getting that online. And that increases our bandwidth. What we're doing, thinking of doing here is, we have existing hardware, but we're trying to get fiber or faster connectivity between our floors, and that's the intent there with the $21,000.
Were you just saying that some of the conferences or training that people might have gone to in the past, it's now done here over the internet?
Right. Yeah, in the past, we also would hire folks to come here and do the training. Now we're just doing it online, and they're at their facility talking to us.
And that saves money.
I just want to sort of layer on a comment to what's already been said by colleagues at the other end of the table. I get, you know, this, IT is kind of like this magical topic. And I think that would do yourself a service as well as us if in these items you could provide a little narrative, because it's not self-evident what any of this is. And this is a public document, I guess. And so it's not just for my personal benefit, but I think it could certainly help me appreciate why certain of these things are needed to be done. Doesn't have to be an elaborate thing. I'm not talking about paragraphs and paragraphs. But just something to distill the essence of what you've just been saying to us. Because if people want to ask me as a city council member, why are we spending $150, $150, et cetera, I'd like to be able to have an intelligent reference point without, say, having to call you up and sort of say, I don't remember what you told me. So I'm saying, I mean, this is important, but it also adds up to a lot of money, when you put it all together. That's all I, so I'd like to see that, if that's possible.
Is there, are there other areas that we need these folks to point out anything? Anything that we see that we've got a question on in the government? In that top section of information? Okay, then, thank you. And why don't we take a short break, and we'll come back for the remaining items.
To do a lot of the fairly exciting things, I think, that you have expressed and that we have interest in doing with communications, as things have really changed in how we get words, how we get word out, how people coordinate with us, communicate with us, all of the social media and kind of ways for regular people to learn about government and to hear from us. We want to take advantage of that in an efficient way. There's a couple of exciting things that are going on. Obviously, there's been a lot of work getting the auditorium up to speed with quite a lot of video and audio equipment. That project is nearly completed, and this budget does propose some extra time for technical, for staff to do the technical assistance with what we expect to be a fairly heavy use of the auditorium by a variety of users, in addition to what we previously use the city council chambers for. One of the other projects I've brought Alvaro here to talk about really is a recreation department-sponsored project. It was their idea to really do some nice TV production work with middle school children. And I'd like Alvaro to talk a little bit about it. You'll hear more when we do discuss the recreation budget. Alvaro?
Yes, it would be the teen media center, more or less. It would be held in the video/audio lab of the Ray Department, there with the computer labs. And at the beginning, it would be first for media, middle school students, and then it could grow up to high school. Hopefully, the kids would stay. Basically, it would be composed by computers, like six computers. I think the project right now is at the beginning, the first, the beginning stages. And two, three cameras, small cameras, digital cameras. And the project would be first, small project, like public service announcements. Small projects like 30-second police announcements because they're finished quick, and the kids need to see the final product quick. Also, media literacy would be very important, to make them understand where the media messages come from, who's sending the messages, why these things.
Yes.
I'm just curious, is this something that would be administered under the recreation department, or would it be under the library?
It's a joint project, but recreation and communications. And it, you know, it does build on something we've wanted to do for a long time. With all the construction that's been underway, it's been a little bit hard to take on this kind of new project. But we do have the video lab that is only used sporadically right now. This would really give it a strong purpose. It also is something that I think does what we've wanted to do with having young people integrated more into some of our video projects. And they'll get to be on our television station, put on the internet when we have those public service announcements and other kind of short projects. So it's something that's very exciting. We were really thrilled that the recreation department wanted to pursue it, and we're at the point where we're able to help them with the video side of that. And Abel, do you want to mention a little bit about what the equipment is that we'll be using for that, or is there anything special?
Well, I think all that stuff started with being involved. We probably have a video editing on a computer. I think there's some Macs that we probably do want to use. And Alvaro will probably work with me on that.
Right. And so it's something that we're, I know you and your staff have been excited about being able to be their mentors.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for nine years, more than nine years. But with all the construction, there wasn't a space. When there was a space, the personnel rotated, so we never finished the product. So I think now is the right moment. We have the location, and I think there is space in the budget.
Are there any opportunities like this for any other projects to potentially get volunteers in and train them for any of the knowledge about the audio/video equipment, where we anticipate having to have somebody who knows the equipment, who would be part of a use of the auditorium, any of those types of programs?
That wasn't really what, I mean, this is very specific to that kind of thing. In terms of, in terms of training, we would want to make sure that somebody goes through a regular system and is part of our employ or otherwise part of our system, such that they can actually maintain the equipment that we have. You know, I don't think it's just something that somebody could just say, oh, can I be trained on how to use the equipment? It's really quite complex. But I'm happy to investigate.
I'm just looking for opportunities to partner with some volunteers for some of the duties that may be needed for, and I'm not clear on exactly what it involves, but any of the audio/video usage in the auditorium, as we're thinking, well, you know, there's the cost of somebody being there for an event, like if it's the, you know, they're showing a movie, or whatever it might be.
I'll get back with you on that. I think it, everything that I have learned so far is it's fairly complex, and we have our liability issues, you know, for the equipment. Nevertheless, there may be some opportunities. I'll have to explore that a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah. Because I'd appreciate knowing, even if it's just, well, you know, there's opportunities for two types of things where that could work, to know that we might have the opportunity to go down that route.
Other items that are in the communications budget, we continue with the same number of newsletters. We cut the amount of money a little bit because we've recognized that the money that we set aside this past year for some of the extra inserts, extra color pages, we haven't as used as much as has been budgeted, or the special pages were part of something that the planning would have paid for because it was part of their, part of a particular initiative or that kind of thing. So this more closely reflects what we actually spend on the newsletter. I don't think that there were any substantial other pieces of information in terms of monies. One of the things that I do want to let you know about is that one of the problems that we have had with the communications budget is, as you know, there's quite a lot of money that comes in from people who have cable TV. We get that money for capital purchase. So we can, we can have stuff, but we don't have the money to operate it. We don't have the money to staff general government that you would hope that would be a carryover. And one of the things that we've been waiting for is for the, for the Congress to really change some of the rules about how that money can be used, because municipalities across the country have this capital money, and then they have real fiscal needs elsewhere in their budget. And so one of the things that we had been told was, well, they're not going to look at it until the health legislation is passed. Well, the health legislation is passed, we're going to now start lobbying hard to get greater flexibility and use of the cable funds, so that it can, we'd love it to go to the general government, to the general fund, as something to help subsidize other aspects of government. You know, we can spend some money, but at some point, just having stuff isn't going to do what we need to have done. And it doesn't, it doesn't really help us communicate. I'm open to, I guess I also want to say that I really, I have heard some of the information that you've shared with our communications manager, but I also will want to be speaking directly with you to make sure that I'm meeting your needs coming up in this coming year.
I'm going to focus a little bit on the personnel and services and charges, which are two of the big numbers on our communication sheet here. And services and charges, $126,000. I think I see that about $70,000 is for the newsletter. Is that right?
Yes, right.
Does that come out of that services and charges? So the other 50 is for other things?
I think there's the web hosting and...
Web hosting and other, I'm not looking for too much detail there.
No, just very quickly, Councilmember Robinson, I think it's noted in both places, but there's contractual cost for the city TV producer and sound engineer, and that's $38,700, and that is also in services and charges.
The TV producer and the sound engineer, part of that as well, is that what?
Part of it, yes.
Okay. So those are not FTEs? They're not included in that?
That's right. That's contractual.
Contractual, okay.
Right.
You'll be the supervisor of communications in FY11, is that right?
That's correct.
But your salary's not in here?
No.
Okay. So the two, the salaries of the $2.55 that are proposed, $255,000, that's for the two FTEs?
Yes, plus we have quite a few interns and other folks, kind of part-time people that help out, just like tonight, staffing some of, you know, helping with the audiovisual work. Or when you go out to film, you know, to the festivals and that kind of thing, there's quite a lot of staff.
Do you have a percentage or a number on how much of the $2.55 is for... is for people?
I'll find out for you, I'm sorry.
The non-two FTEs, I'm just trying to get a sense.
I'm sure I can, I'm sure it's somewhere close, but I'll make sure you get it.
It's forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Some of that cost is also, that's not benefits or anything, that's just straight salary cost, Councilmember Robinson.
It's just what, what was the last?
It's just wages. And part of that is there's an increase from the current near budget with the expectation that we would be staffing some events in the auditorium. That was also included in this year's budget, this year's budget, but only for a partial year.
Okay, so the two fifty-five is the personnel, but for two, for two full-time equivalents, but about forty-eight that I just hear you say is for other-
For wages for others.
Other wages for other people. Am I getting that?
Yes, as well as fringe benefit cost and any overtime are all bundled in that two fifty.
So the, I see. The fringe, I know, I see that the fringes and wages are bundled in, I'm just trying to break it down.
Sure.
I know there's two FTEs and then it sounds like there's non, there's forty-some for other folks that you mentioned just a couple of minutes ago.
Right.
And then there's forty-some in this, inside this two fifty-five that's not for the two FTEs. So there's about, so there's two FTEs and then another hundred grand, a hundred thousand dollars that, that is covered by this two hundred and fifty thousand and then another forty-some that's not listed here or not in the personnel subtotal. Do I have that right?
I want to get back with you. You lost me a little bit.
I can actually just run through the numbers, the council would want me to. Do you want me to break down the two fifty-five?
I would, yeah, I'd like to just, this might be instructive for us in other budgets.
Sure.
I'm looking kind of, the two fifty-five seemed a little high for two full-time equivalents.
Right, and it would be.
Particularly if one's a media assistant.
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to get to the bottom of why is a media assistant and a production manager making up two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars? And now I'm starting to get a sense that there's fifty thousand is for other folks and then there's another forty-some thousand for the folks that aren't in this two fifty-five.
There's four, there's four figures I could give you if that would be helpful.
Okay, true, shoot.
As far as full-time staff, the salaries, just salaries are one-four-seven, zero-one-five. Part-time is four-six-eight-zero-zero. Fringe benefits is six-zero-five-four-five. And overtime, as noted, is fifteen-hundred.
Okay, so it's, so it's really, it's two-hundred-and-seven thousand for the two full-time positions, including fringes, forty-six for part-time, a little bit of overtime. And then there was the other two, other positions that you mentioned earlier that-
That's for the most part. I mean, fringes would also include social security and Medicare.
Yeah.
Like in Medicare, which obviously is applicable to part-time staff as well.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Did I get everything you wanted?
Yes, I was looking for some clarification and I certainly have it.
So we're set on communicating?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Well, you were talking about this recreation department program. And I was reading through the attachment on this, this thing, and I guess I just didn't see it. Where is that actually explained or laid out?
Well, it's, it's, it's really not. It's simply that our staff is helping that out. There is money, I think, in the CIP for the equipment for the, for that center and recreation. We'll talk about it more in the budget.
It's mentioned in the special revenue fund.
Oh, okay.
Any kind of hardware costs are being paid for out of the cable grant funds and all of those are accounted in the special revenue fund, just under general government.
In, in, in the blue, on the blue pack of the blue page, it says capital revenues from these three, it's the sort of under fiscal impact, the last paragraph, says franchise agreements for each of these three cable TV operators provide the support for the PEG channel, which is okay. Capital revenues from these three sources are projected to total four-hundred-and-nine-thousand. But when I went back into the special revenues, it looks like there's three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that's coming in for capital improvements and I couldn't figure out where the other fifty-nine thousand. So I was wondering if the four-oh-nine is misprinted.
No, the four-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars is the revenues that are projected to come in in FY eleven. The project descriptions are just that, they're expenditure project descriptions. So it is not proposed, Councilmember Schultz, to expend everything that is coming in in FY eleven.
So there's, there's money left over.
Yeah. This, obviously I don't think you all would remember this because it's been quite a while, but if you look at the audit report, the comprehensive financial report, and you look at fund balance, you will note that there is a fund balance specifically designated for cable and that has built up over the years because we don't spend everything that comes in.
And it's been the case for a long time that we didn't spend it because we were holding on to it in anticipation of needing it for something like the auditorium. And so we had the equipment for ten years and now it's time to replace it and so we had the money stockpiled.
Well, and I think as Susie indicated, I think one of the challenges for, I think, everybody, including Montgomery County, as I understand it, is you get so much money for the, the capital part of these cable franchise agreements that even Montgomery County, as I understand it, has difficulty spending it. So it would be great if the legis, you know, from a legislative standpoint, if that could be changed and some funds could actually not be going to capital but could be used for operating purposes, but that's the way the agreements are structured.
And we also, I mean, and one of the parts that's tough here is that you don't want to have a big pot of money sitting there. I mean, and so, I mean, we talk about how do we connect public works, what can we, you know, what are some useful things that we can do with these capital funds that do, that will help us?
So can we like use it to pay for an inflatable dome, which would facilitate, over the basketball court, which would facilitate filming basketball games in the wintertime? Would that be cool?
I, we could certainly explore that. Any, any and all ideas are welcome.
We really, you know-
I mean, really, it's really important, yeah. Those, put them on cable.
I think if a convincing case could be made that it is tied to the operation of the, Albero is looking very skeptical.
He says he doesn't want to go to that.
We'll send our man from the Treasury.
There you go. But, but I think it is one of these things too, that yes, we have these funds and we try to spend them, but we also can't construct things that didn't just sit there. I mean, it does have to be useful, it does have to be something that we can upgrade.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Schultz, I think you still had a question that we hadn't answered.
Yeah, I was trying to get to the bottom of this four-hundred-and-nine thousand. What I gathered is that this four-hundred-and-nine thousand is an accumulated pot of money that's been growing over the years, is that what you're saying?
The four-hundred-and-nine thousand is actually what we anticipate receiving in FY eleven. There is actually more money that is essentially reserved from prior years. So that is actually the expected revenue to be received in FY eleven.
We get a lot of money.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't used to get so much money, but it has, I understand-
But since Verizon started.
Since Verizon FiOS came to town, it's gone up.
Oh, okay. But where is that reflected in this, in this binder at four-hundred-and-nine thousand? I guess I couldn't relate the two. And I'm sorry to be dumb about this.
No, 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 you're not, it's not at all.
Where is the special revenue?
You got the special revenue section.
Yeah, I was looking under the special funds.
Yeah, what's in the binder under special revenue in the back is really project descriptions to give you an idea of how those monies would be extended.
Somewhere else I need to look?
Yes, and I'd be happy to show you after the, after the meeting if you would like.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll go with that. Thank you.
I'd be happy to help, I'm sorry.
Now, just one last question then. And that is, is that your original programming measurement, that box of performance-
Yes.
Shows that in 'oh-nine you had seventy-four hours in fiscal, you estimate that will be up to ninety hours, but in FY eleven it's going to jump up, what, by, you know, about forty percent to one-hundred-and-twenty-six hours.
Right, we anticipate that we'll have a lot of very interesting programming in the auditorium that we will then want to broadcast.
Okay, that's where that's-
That's right. That, and I don't think there was anything else. That was, that was it.
Okay. So that's the auditorium kind of coming online and-
That's correct.
Being utilized.
That's right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate my turn.
Anything else on communications? Okay, we'll go to non-departmental.
Well, I have one clarification, city manager.
Nope, too late.
Back to the, back to the FTEs and the part-time, there's, you said there's a hundred-and-forty-seven for two FTEs and forty-six for part-time. Why aren't the part-times included in the FTE?
I will follow up with Karen, I had the same question about that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, Councilmember Robinson.
Okay.
Okay.
Non-departmental.
That would be me. If everyone can turn to the non-departmental section of your binder. As the name implies, this is generally where we book expenditures that are not specifically related to any department, hence the name. This is a budget that while it does have personnel costs, there are no FTEs that are budgeted in the non-departmental budgetary unit. Personnel-related expenditures that show up in this budgetary unit, the primary one is workers' compensation insurance. As I mentioned last week, I do anticipate making a change from the Montgomery County insurance pool just because of the rate of increase that we would receive if we did stay in the pool. Based on what we have researched so far, I anticipate that we would probably go to the injured workers' fund, which I think the city had belonged to a number of years ago. One of the challenges in the workers' compensation insurance realm is they do not like insuring police officers because of the probability of loss and they also do not like insuring sanitation workers because actually-
That's the bulk of our employees.
That's correct. Sanitation actually has one of the highest workers' compensation rates in the industry. So basically we, we're shopping around to private insurance companies and I think the denials are up to four or five so far. So we will keep checking, but right now the injured workers' fund does look like the most financially viable option. And based on, we ran some calculations with our estimated payroll and it looks like we'd be able to keep our costs constant by moving to the injured workers' fund.
And that's, that's Iowa?
Other costs that show up in personnel and non-departmental would be unemployment claims. They will get billed by the state for any kind of unemployment claims. One of the things that I mentioned in the transmittal message and mentioned probably every place, typically we would estimate the rate of increase in health insurance and we would basically put it in all the individual departmental budgets. That becomes very messy as we go through the budget process, as we get updated information and talk to our bargaining units, talk to our brokers. So what is before the council this evening actually does include a contingency in non-departmental for an expected increase in the cost of employee health insurance. Once we have finalized what that would look like, we would basically just take that contingency and allocate it to the individual departmental budgets during reconciliation before you actually plan the budget.
Is that the one-hundred-and-twenty thousand for other fringe?
There's actually two-hundred-and-ten thousand in other fringe, so that would be health, that would be, yeah, that would be health insurance, unemployment insurance, the cost of our employee assistance program and other things.
And that's why the change over previous years, because it's parked there?
Right.
Okay.
Other costs that are in the non-departmental budget, as kind of noted in your information, I'll just highlight it, under services and charges is the cost of other insurances that the city has, this would be our liability insurance, our auto insurance, property insurance, things of that nature. The proposed budget includes one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars in services and charges and of that amount, one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, nine hundred represents insurance costs, not workers' comp but the other things that I mentioned. In this budget, you'll probably note there is a very large figure for miscellaneous, the proposed figure for FY eleven is roughly three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. There's a, pretty much, almost an entire amount is broken down on the agenda cover sheet. I apologize, I did have a typographical error on the agenda cover sheet, that's my fault. What I had proposed for the Independence Day committee was not fifteen thousand but twelve thousand. My apologies for that. The largest, two largest figures that are included in the miscellaneous category are the city supplement to the state homeowner's property tax credit. I think most of the council is familiar with this program, but it is targeted towards low and moderate income homeowners. The city has provided a supplement for more years than I can recall, the mayor might need to help me out with that or Councilmember Siemens, but I know it was in place for some time before I came on the city staff in two thousand and four.
It's been around longer than I have.
Yeah, the current amount of the supplement is fifty, it's fifty percent of the state credit and we have, the number varies, but we typically average about one-hundred-and-seventy residents who benefit through this program. Checks usually go out Yovanda in spring, right around this time, not too much longer than-
Yeah, we're trying to get them out before the end of May.
Right. And it is probably one of the things that we do, that we actually get thank you notes from people thanking us for the assistance that we provide.
And therefore I'll take credit for, for changing the percentage. We used to be at fifteen percent, then we moved it to thirty or thirty-five and then we went to the maximum, which is fifty.
I think we went from thirty to fifty during nighttime here.
Right.
And I'll take credit for pushing that.
We, we note the council's support of this program and every letter we send out with a check. The other large item that is included in the miscellaneous account is a charter required general contingency account. The charter actually prescribes this and states that it should be budgeted as an expenditure. This is one of the areas where by the charter we are forced to budget this and generally we don't tap it, so it is an area where you will see variances between budget and actual expenditures. It is equal to half a percent of budgeted general fund revenues and the amount that is included in the proposed budget at this time is ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. One of the other things I'll just probably mention, I already mentioned one of them, which is there's twelve thousand dollars in the proposed budget as support for the Independence Day committee. Other funding to outside agencies would be ten thousand dollars for the crossroads farmers market, ten thousand dollars for the small community grants program. This is obviously, as you know, an initiative the council had undertaken. This is the first year that funding was included in the budget. There's twenty thousand in the FY ten budget. I wanted to kind of keep the program going, didn't want to kill it so early in its infancy, but thought it was appropriate to cut it back in light of constrained revenues. In this year's budget, there is fifteen thousand that the council had allocated for kind of emergency assistance funding. The proposed budget includes a continuation of funding for those services. You may have noticed that the Old Tacoma Business Association is not on this list. I did recommend in my proposed budget funding for OTBA, but that's been accounted historic, accounted for historically in the housing and community development budget and that's where you will find that. I think it was probably included there a number of years ago because they are essentially performing a function that the planning staff would otherwise perform. So I didn't want you to be confused by the fact it wasn't in non-departmental. The only other thing I'd just comment on non-departmental so that you're not alarmed, you'll probably notice that there's a rather huge variance between adopted and estimated expenditures for this year. There's about nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand budgeted and projected expenditures of two-point-four-six million. Didn't want you to think I went crazy with the city's money. This is reflecting the payoff of the state retirement deficit that the council had previously approved. If you look at the general fund summary, there's also the anticipated bond proceeds receipts this fiscal year, so it balances out.
So two of those big variances match.
In that case, they just cancel each other out, right, on the revenue and expenditure side.
Any questions, Councilmember Robinson?
I didn't, we didn't talk much about the, that Whopper state retirement plan deficit repayment. Well, we talked about it a good bit, but there was something in my mind that I didn't bring up and that, that's the kind of the gloom and doom scenario of, it happened once, could it happen again?
Sure.
So if, if the economy takes a, continues to go down or really takes a bad direction, could we be faced with another one-point-six million dollars that comes up?
I mean, the state, just like we would probably do with our own pension plan, you know, will periodically go through and evaluate funding levels. Part of the reason for the very sizable increase in the contribution for non-sworn personnel is probably a result of investment losses, quite candidly. So I think there's always that likelihood, you know.
Have we done any analysis on that? I mean, if the, the stock market's back up to eleven thousand, what if it went back down to where it had previously fallen and stays there? And our investments, they- And our investments, the, the return on our investments was cut by a very large amount? That's a risk that we have in that, in that regard, is it not?
The state retirement plan, just as the city does with its own plan, will go through an actuarial analysis that calculates contributions. There have been years, I, over time, where the city's contribution on behalf of civilian employees has actually decreased from one year to the next. So, it's really a function of any particular actuarial calculation for any year. And like I say, we do the same thing with our own police pension plan, unfortunately for us, it's, at least during my time here, it's done nothing but go up substantially, though it's stabilized from this year to next year. I think all I can probably tell you, Councilmember Robinson, is based on the deficit that we currently owe the state, it has done nothing but continue to grow despite the city's payments. So, any-
The deficit continues to grow despite the city's payment?
Yes.
And this 1.6, the, the total in our pension plan right now, is, is it 40 million? Do I have that right?
For the, the state retirement, I'm not sure where you're getting the 40 million, the state retirement plan, we're just a participating entity. The only thing that probably the city can carve out its own piece of it would be the state, I mean, the city's own retirement plan for police officers. I don't remember what the valuation of the assets were as of June 30th of '09, that would have been the last actuarial valuation done. I'm not sure I'm answering your question, Councilwoman Robinson.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm asking the right question, maybe Josh can, can shed light on this. This 1.6 million is a shortfall from the amount that we thought we would receive into the future to pay our current pension requirements into the future. The difference between that and what was, what was anticipated to be returned and what is now anticipated to be returned. Do I have that right? We thought we were going to get a certain amount for our pensions. The actuarial folks went, "Well, it doesn't look like we're going to get that amount. We're a million six short, so how do you want to pay that?" And we decided to take a bond to pay that. Do I have that right so far? I know I'm simplifying it to an extreme degree, but I'm trying to put it in terms-
Sure.
-so that I can understand it, and my constituents can understand it, because a million six is a lot of money, and-
Right.
-the questions I'm getting are, "Well, if it happened once, can it happen again?"
Yeah, there's a lot of history here. What I know is back in, once again, maybe perhaps the mayor might be able to help, but back in the mid-19, probably mid-1990s, maybe even earlier than that, the state calculated the funding levels and what any participating jurisdiction in the state retirement plan actually had paid at that point. And basically, there's a number of jurisdictions, it's actually in the state actuarial evaluation report, if you want to read that, but they basically determined that there were a number of jurisdictions, and the list is fairly long, who had deficits or unfunded liabilities. I know that the city, I believe, used a lobbyist, I believe it was Larry Levitan at that time, and there was a lot of negotiation between a number of the jurisdictions and the state, and the state retirement system in terms of what that liability actually was. And I believe the city, as well as other jurisdictions, was successful in negotiating that amount downward. At that point, the city made a decision to amortize that deficit over a 40-year period. Some entities amortized it over 25, I mean-
Right.
-all spout out in the report.
I guess I'm, at this point, I have to say I'm familiar with how we got to this 1.6.
Right. What I can say is you can, it's not quite this bad, but it's almost like paying the minimum balance on a credit card, and I had shared some information with the council calculating what the amount of that deficit has been over the past five to six years. And despite the city's payment of anywhere from 75 to 80,000 a year, the deficit has continued to grow because of the difference between essentially the interest rate the city was paying and the minimal amount that it was paying on the deficit.
And again, I'm familiar with how we got to that 1.6. I'm trying to look into the future and anticipate how, if, if this could happen again, and to what extent it could happen. That's, that's really all I'm trying to bring up here.
Right, I think that's a matter of, I don't know what the state's, I'm not familiar enough to know what prompted the state's valuation in the mid-1990s, or whether they're planning another one. Clearly, the state is attempting not to have deficits be created by the fact it jacked up the contribution rates for every participating entity, including Tacoma Park. So, my sense of what they're doing, once again, I'm representing the state retirement system, is that by jacking up the contributions for all participating entities as much as they are, they're trying to have the funding mechanism, they had to deal with the past deficit calculated in the 90s remain in effect, and they're trying to keep people from getting back in that situation again.
Okay, that's a good, that's, that sheds, starts to shed light on it for me.
Sorry it took so long to get to that.
It's all right, and, and when you say that it's jacking up the contributions, that means that there's more required of the city to pay on a yearly basis in order to stay even, right?
It's probably about $200,000 more that we will be paying on behalf of civilian employees in FY11 compared to this year.
Okay, that's starting, that's, that's an increase this year, from 2010 to 2011.
Correct.
So, in addition to the 1.6 million, there's another 200,000 which we're kicking in to keep even at this point as regards to state.
Yeah, it's the required actuarial contribution by the state, and I know other entities, just because there's a lot on the city management list serve about this, received similar rates of increase.
Okay, and so that 200,000 is what's supposed to keep us current, and that, that could go up. So, rather than perhaps seeing another 1.6 million, it sounds more like we would see if the, if the finances were, got to be in a very difficult situation, that that 200,000 would grow. Am I right there? Am I kind of going along the wrong, the right track now?
You know, I think it depends. The state, as we do, will do an actuarial calculation every year. I know from, I believe it was from, Monique, correct me if I'm wrong, but from 2009 to 2010, the, the state actually dropped the contribution rate for participating entities, because if you recall, probably asset valuations were very high.
Right, right.
Obviously, in between-
And is this rate something like the, the constant yield tax rate, that's constantly then recalculated every year by the state, the actuarial thing?
Right.
They come back to us and say, "Oh gee, you know, to keep even, you're going to have to pay this much more, or you're going to pay that much less." And is that then some, that's something that we hear every, every year, right, from you?
It's very similar to what you hear from, you know, we, every year, we share the results of the, the actuarial valuation of the police pension plan.
Right.
And it is a very similar analysis.
Okay, I, I'm sorry to go on and dig away.
No, no, it's fine, it's a lot of money, and it's a valid concern.
Yeah, and, but thank you for the explanation.
Can I get Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Clay down here, and then Councilmember Wright?
It's been so long since I thought of my question, I just can't remember what it was I wanted to ask.
I was trying to keep it short, but I, I believe your intentions were totally thorough and honest.
And I believe I, I took too long, Councilmember Robinson, to answer your question, which I apologize.
First I plodded you, and then I came back, so.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. I'm just curious, this is just an open-ended question, when you're trying to project workers' compensation insurance claims, I noticed that in 20, in 2009, we had 25, and 2010, we estimated, we estimate that we'll have nine for the entire year. Of course, that could change tomorrow. But, and then for FY11, you're, you're projecting 17. I mean, I'm just curious, what, is there any way that you can rationally kind of project anything like this?
One, I would say, I would be surprised based on the claims report I have seen, I would need to find out which staff member came up with the nine, but based on the claims reports I've seen, I think we probably passed nine a heck of a long time ago, so I think that may be a typographical error.
Okay.
Because I can think of nine off the top of my head.
Let's, let's pick a one in front of that number.
That would probably be closer to the number.
Okay.
I think it's a very, very difficult thing to project, I think-
I would assume.
-one of the things that my hope is with possibly the move to IWA, and that I, we have talked to them about, is they tend to have a fairly good loss control program, and I think that is probably an area where the city needs to do more than what it's been doing. There are certainly going to be, you know, some workers' comp claims that are unavoidable, but I do think there needs to be more analysis in terms of, is there a trend in the type of claims that are occurring that perhaps some type of training or equipment might have prevented?
Okay, now, I've thought of my other two questions. The charter require general contingency account, you said that that generally does not give use.
Most times.
So, what I heard you say, most of the time.
Most times it does not.
So, that means, does that mean that there's an account in which this money builds the one year after the other?
What it will mean for, for calculating the end-of-the-year fund balance, you have to make some assumption, and the assumption is that it, it has potential of being spent.
Correct.
If it is not spent, what will happen is it just falls back into unreserved fund balance, and as opposed to the numbers that are in this document, you'll see your ending fund balance be about $96,000 higher. So, it just falls back into the general fund balance.
Kind of gets dispersed.
Just sits there until you all decide to allocate it.
Okay, so, we could decide to allocate it at some future point during the fiscal year?
Sure, I mean, and one of the, as you, as you may recall from last week, one of the things as proposed would happen is because the projected operating revenues for next year are not sufficient to fund the contribution to the Equipment Replacement Reserve, one of my recommendations is to take some of the excess fund balance and to transfer it to the Equipment Replacement Reserve, so we maintain that funding.
And that account balance right now, you have a notion-
The Equipment Replacement Reserve?
No, no, this contingency account, what, does that, where does that stand today?
It, it actually is not near Mark, there are, there are actually, this is just a contingency account that is driven by the charter, and it's budgeted every year. If it's not spent, it just sort of falls back into the rainy day fund, if you will. The charter also has a requirement for, it's actually called the Emergency Fund. Not sure why, but that's what it's called, why there's two of them. It's an emergency fund, it was set up a number of years ago with a contribution of $250,000. The city does not contribute to that annually, it just grows essentially by the rate of inflation. And I think that stands right around, maybe 300 and some thousand dollars Yvonne, does that sound about right?
300, maybe five.
Okay, a little bit low.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman, what?
So, when I've looked at the miscellaneous expenditures and the non-departmental expenditures, Independence Day Committee kind of stands out to me. And the reason is because we received requests from Jazz Festival and the Folk Festival.
I think there were eight people who, eight, eight entities that requested funding.
Right, but how many of them were festivals or events?
See if I can get, I'm going to have to count on my fingers here.
Okay, well, let's, but, so several of them are, are events, and several of which we provide significant amounts of-
In-kind support.
-city in-kind support to, including-
I would say all of them.
Yeah, okay, all of them, lots.
Lots.
And we kind of do it twice for the Independence Day Committee, because we do the whole parade, and we do then the fireworks. And I think it was just last, was it just last year that we came up with this sort of rather large addition to be able to continue the fireworks, 12, was it 12, 10, I think it was $10,000, $12,000 to continue the fireworks?
We, we increased the amount that we gave the Independence Day Committee, and this budget reduces it back down.
To the same amount.
But it's still above what the city had given in prior years, correct?
The, the prior year's amount, I believe, was about 8,000 something?
It was, it was $8,250 until FY10. It, it, that number's just been in place for a number of years.
So, I, I think it's hard for all of these groups also, but my experience, living in San Francisco as long as I did, is that there are a lot of parades that happen in San Francisco, and a lot of events that happened afterwards, and people collect money to support the activity during the event, which I, I don't think we, you know, we do a lot of during the Independence Day Committee. We have, you know, thousands of people lining the street, not a lot of thousands, but there's a lot of people lining the street. You know, when we had the parades in the, in the Castro and Market Street, we would get a giant rainbow flag, and people would run and throw money into it. One of the things that Karen's been talking to the Folk Festival Committee about is one of the great ways they used to raise money was they'd get drag queens to stand out in front of the, the gates to the festival with big buckets, that people would drop $20 bills into, and we needed a gimmick to get more people to come through to get money.
Folk queens, are you talking about folk queens?
I'm sorry?
Folk queens for the Folk Festival?
She said, she said drag queens.
I'm making a little joke.
I don't think that the, well, actually, yes, in fact, the, the, yes, they're not thinking about drag queens for the Folk Festival, thank you.
They're thinking about folk queens.
Folk queens, but, but I think that, you know, we talked about volunteers and donations, and these kind of, this is another, I think this, there's more opportunity to bring funding into the Independence Day Committee than probably any of the other festivals that we actually support. And I would, I would gather that, probably spend more money supporting the Independence Day, like in-kind money than any of the other festivals, and it kind of, it, now, when it was, a few of them that we were supporting, that was one thing, but we've cut back all the others, and we've left this one. And then the other thing I would say, which I've said before when we talked about this, is I remember as a kid in the 80s, when we went to the fireworks display at the, my high school, we paid five bucks per family to go in, you know, which wasn't a big deal, but it's how they paid for the fireworks.
Yeah, I mean, I included funding in my budget based on the council's discussion back in January. Obviously, you did not discuss a specific dollar amount relative to the Independence Day Committee they had requested. I apologize, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was something over 13,000, and I cut it back slightly, based on what they had historically spent on fireworks, and turned it up a little bit for inflation. Obviously, it's the council's decision.
So, it was just, you were just putting in what we, what the straw poll said, we were ready to support.
Well, but, but I said I would support festivals in the city, and it's, I think it's, my point is that now we're only supporting this one, and not supporting all of them. Seems kind of odd to me.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wright?
I had one comment, and then a very quick question for the city manager. I do want to point out that all this funding we're doing of this, the retirement funds, is critical and very important to the future retirement for the city employees. You know, people often think of this as something that votes for the future, they don't think about it. States and municipalities have thought about things that way. California, Kansas are now faced with situations where state employees who for many years, you know, gave their heart and soul to that state, and, you know, worked for a decent pay, but also worked because they knew that they would have a stable retirement, are now looking at benefits cuts, that they thought it was like a given that they would have, their retirement and pension would be funded forever into the future. California's going to take a big whack at people's, you know, people's teachers, police officers at their pensions, and there's a great NPR story about comparing Nebraska and Kansas. And Nebraska has a set of laws and a process that kind of forces the state to do it, and Kansas, I don't think I have them backed, but I'm pretty sure, and Kansas doesn't, and the politicians kind of kicked it down the road and didn't have a backbone about it, and now they have real problems. And so, I think we should remember for the, and I think the unions should remember, I know we're not talking about negotiations, but we heard about concerns today, this is something that we're really contributing to making sure we, we continue to fund. My, my question is just to make sure that Maryland's overall retirement fund is, in the ranking of states, well thought of and thought of as well-funded, because I would hate to feel like we're contributing to it at a, at a good level, but then find out down the road we really should have been contributing 25% more, or maybe other places in the state are contributing. So, do we have any sense of where, how we're, how, you know, like our, our general finances as a state are very well-regarded, and we have AAA going, right, so I'm just curious about the pension?
You know, I don't know the answer to the question, but I know the people to ask.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll try to see what I can find out for you.
I will say, it used to be terrible, and that's why there were been a lot of changes and, and large contributions.
I'll just point out to my colleagues that it's 10 after 10, we've still got debt service and changed the facility hours, and folks have been wanting to get out at a reasonable hour, so.
He forgot that he said that.
Senility sets in. Any more questions on the report? Okay, debt service.
Yvonne just went ahead.
Debt service, we have basically proposed a budget of $1, $2 million. If you flip to the tab on debt service, in the back of the binder, there's a couple pages of narrative to discuss. of pages of narrative to discuss the different loans and notes that we have outstanding. And I'll give you a brief summary of the debt interest and principal payments as well as some trust TPs that are included in this, these expenditures. We have budgeted anticipating that the annual payment for fiscal year 2011 for the Public Works Facility will be about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. Annual payment for the street improvement funds will be three-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars. We're going to make our last payment on the police cars will be fiscal year 2006 lease and that's one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars. And we have two outstanding funds for the community center construction. The total payments on those two total three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-four dollars. And we anticipate on the payoff of the retirement deficit, they would know that our first payment in fiscal year 2011 would be one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. And that basically covers the major debt payments that we have during fiscal year 2011.
So all of that totals up?
It totals to one point, two million dollars. There are a couple of small payments.
Where do we see that on, on these sheets, Yvonne? The one-point-two and the other numbers that you just mentioned?
Basically, on the narrative, the principal payments and the interest payments for 2011.
If you want to see the total, Councilmember Robinson.
I haven't recognized any of the numbers that.
Yeah, I think what's in the, it's actually, since that's intended to provide more detail, if you actually look in the fund summaries in the front of the book or in the transmittal messages, it's actually mentioned a number of places.
Okay.
But if you look under the general fund summary, it's in the fund summary section and you'll see where it shows a breakdown of, it provides historical information on the city's debt from audited '07 through proposed FY-11. It's titled general fund summary, it has a summary of revenues and expenditures for the general fund.
Okay, I'm still looking for the one-point-two. There's the speed camera fund.
Yeah, it's one-point-two-four million. It's the last item under expenditures.
Debt service, I see, okay. So the, with the part under debt, under debt service in the back, is it breakdown of that one-point-two?
Correct.
Do I have that right?
That's correct, Councilmember Robinson.
Okay, and I guess I'm not seeing where it adds up, but I'll take it on page.
Yeah, we can try to see if there's a way to, maybe we can just show the individual ones if we'd like this to, I mean, and not in a narrative form, that would be helpful.
I think it would help, but I also, just since we jumped back to the general fund section for a second, we tried to find the pages here. I know at some point in the past, people did page numbering in the budget and it tended to be, my sense was it tended to be handwritten and that stuff must have been Xerox because it was, I know it was handwritten.
No, it's actually, well, these are all actually, basically in order to upload them, they're separate files. So they are separate sections that are basically categorized to facilitate uploading to the web so someone can click on tabs and not try to download the entire budget document.
But could we have page number within the tab? Even just that example of like looking through the revenue, the general revenue fund, you could say it's in the.
Yeah, like, like, general government was GG one, GG two, GG three.
If you'd like to leave your binders, we'll see what we can do by next week.
I know it can be generated as, as you print these, by section.
Is this a suggestion for that section?
Yeah, not just here, we don't want to go back and print the whole binding.
Councilmember.
So, I have two quick questions and maybe if I can't find it, one is, do we have a number for what our aggregate cost of capital is? Like, if you take everything, all the law, the borrowing we're doing, like, what is our average interest rate, basically? Because I think that would be, I think it's pretty low and I think that would be pretty informative.
You're talking for the items that are debt financed?
For the debt service, yeah, anything debt service related, right? There's an underlying interest rate and then there's got to be some total number of aggregate cost of capital for the city.
That's not the one-point-two?
No, it would be expressed as an annual percentage interest rate, basically.
Like three and a half.
The community center loans are about three-point-four percent.
What we can do is actually in the audit report is, you know, obviously in some cases there are, I think the ones that are being proposed now, sometimes they have fixed interest rates such as the one for the retirement of the state, state retirement deficit is actually a fixed rate over the ten-year term. Other debt issue issuances actually will vary from year to year, but we can probably give you the, kind of what's considered a true interest cost over the life of the issuance.
Yeah, and I, I think it's just would be helpful for the whole city. And then the second question is, I guess I could do the math, it's a little bit funny, I know often I'm asking for more detail, but do we also have just like the summary of what the debt ratio is for the city? Because that's another informative number.
We, we have it as of June 30th, 2009, because that's actually a requirement for the comprehensive annual financial report. I don't recall what that is off the top of my head, but we, that information as of June 30th, 2009 is readily available, but it's a requirement for the caper.
So I think those two things are both things I'd be interested in seeing for this year, but also an ongoing annual thing that should be in the budget.
So, don't forget to do lists of our suggestions for what goes in future budgets. Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, in looking at corporate financial statements, and this is, I understand it's not a financial statement, this is the budget, you know, it's customary in a reviewed statement to sort of show the, to project debt service out for all capital outlays going out into the future, in this case perhaps as much as twenty years. And I'm wondering if that makes sense here so that we can compare what our debts, our budgeted debt service is in 2011, not only backwards to what it was prior years, but also if we, in other words, if we did no more borrowing, and obviously it would step down, the principal balances would step down, it's, so that, and you could sort of get a feel for whether we're staying within a range of acceptable debt service in proportion to our total budget. Because one, you look at these as individual projects, which I'm glad we have here, it's not consolidated anywhere except in that general fund, that one number.
We can give that to you because obviously that's something that we track.
And it would help, and then by, but, I mean, obviously it probably is in the financial statement that's done annually. And so, you know, maybe one of the ways of handling is just a reference that, saying that as of June 30th, 2009 was this and as of June 30th, 2010 or 2011, we expect it to be this. So we can sort of understand where we're headed debt service-wise.
Yeah, the way, the format, we can certainly prepare the additional schedules because we actually, we track that so they're readily available. The format of this is actually how it is included in the audit report by the city's independent financial auditors, is to actually provide some narrative, but we can just provide a summary schedule that just will show up.
I just think that would be useful.
The only thing that we'll need to do is obviously we have not, with public works, we're estimating since we have not closed.
Right, I understand.
And that's probably what we would do is just assume, for purposes of financial analysis, a flat number and carry it forward.
Well, some of the bond issues here, a number of them are based on variable interest rates.
Over the life of the issuance.
Yeah, over the life of the interest. And for one, for one thing, it says, like in the case of the bond, communities, community center bonds, is the principal interest payments parentheses based on variable interest rates and parentheses are to be repaid in variable amounts and increasing each year until the bond is paid. Two questions. One, I'd be curious to know what the basis for the interest rate is, because it's pegged to something.
Yeah, but those rates were, I'd have to go back and look, those rates were actually set, so while they may vary from year to year, the city knows what those are going to be.
They actually do know.
Yes, yes, that was part of the debt service schedule when the city closed.
Okay, and then why would they be increasing each year?
It depends how the city structured it. I can only speak to the ones that have been done since I've been here, but some of that also depends on how the individual bidder on the bonds, it's probably familiar to you, but obviously when you take any, you're essentially bidding your debt issuance and people are submitting different schedules and basically what will happen is there's an analysis done of the true interest cost and you will pick the one that's most financially advantageous. And my assumption is for the ones that happened prior to my tenure, they were probably done in many cases through the state infrastructure fund and the state would have basically conducted that analysis on behalf of the city and any other participating entity.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just used to the fact that when you have a, a long-term debt, you know, that you, you would expect in the circumstance where the payments would be, if it was a fixed interest rate, would be equal over the life of the debt. And if it's a variable interest rate, the debt service could actually go down if the interest rate went down.
I would need to go back and look at the specific schedules, Yvonne has them in her office. Typically, in my experience, you will see payments decrease as the principal is declining. That's a typical structure that I'm familiar with.
Yeah, so that's why I was a little confused about the word increasing each year.
Yeah, well, we'll pull these out for you.
Actually, the interest rate does increase each year.
Yeah, they're going up nowadays and I realize.
So like on amortization schedule.
Sometimes what will, I'm guessing, is sometimes what will happen, especially for longer-term issuances, and I, is that the bidder will basically have a lower interest rate in the first five to ten years of a twenty-year issuance because.
Build in increases?
They will build in increases to hedge their bets that the markets are going to change.
Okay, but that's something that's a little different than in the private banking world. Thank you.
And just as a general comment, any of the analyses that have been done, because the council had questioned various times over the years about kind of where are we in our debt ratio and, you know, what's, what's normal for governments? And the, and the answer has always come back that we're well within the standards for where we're supposed to be.
Good.
And Councilmember Schultz, I don't believe you were on the council, but the, one of the requirements, fairly recent requirements of the state is that every local government actually have a debt management policy that was filed with the state. I'd be happy to send you a copy.
I have a copy of that.
Just wanted to make sure you had seen that, okay.
Did we get everybody? Any other questions on debt service?
Councilmember Siemens looks like, oh, please God, no.
Okay, change for facility hours.
Yeah, this is more information, I don't know that council necessarily, probably would want to have more discussions during both the library budget and the recreation department budget, but in my discussions with staff during the development of my budget, one of the things that, that I talked to them about was to kind of examine the operating hours of city facilities, you know, when utilization was highest, when perhaps it was lowest, and whether some adjustments in the operating hours of city facilities was warranted. Included in the agenda packet is sort of a summary of the proposed changes. I don't know, if you want me to go through them, obviously everyone's had the chance to look at them, but basically we are proposing.
I think, I think everybody has.
Right.
Should have had the chance to look at them.
Right, okay.
And maybe we can just go to questions and I've got one or two. On the community center hours, the proposal for Monday through Thursday is eight-thirty to nine, and I saw the note about one on, one person on duty because we always go past nine o'clock. But I was thinking about the usage of this building for things like meetings in the evening and I know those meetings tend to start at seven-thirty and I'm used to community meetings tending to go a little longer than an hour and a half. I always think of like seven-thirty to nine fifteen, nine thirty and wondering whether this is, how realistic it is to, to make it till nine o'clock on a weeknight and a lot of people are going to say, but they're going to kick us out before our meeting's over.
I think there are probably different theories about how long a meeting should go and still be productive. That was not a comment aimed at the city council, let me be clear about that.
Of course not.
You know, I don't think it's unusual for facilities to sort of, you know, first of all, I would agree with you, most meetings start at seven-thirty. I think it can be difficult for people coming home from work and trying to start a meeting at seven o'clock. I guess in my discussions with staff, I guess my own assessment, since this is my proposed budget, an hour and a half meeting didn't seem to be unreasonable timeframe. But obviously, you know, we can certainly, we'll have to go back and recalculate some cost, obviously, if we're staying open later than what we had anticipated, but.
And the other question I had was for Saturdays from ten to six, what I wrote down here as, as my thought was, gee, ten to ten? I didn't know how we were thinking about using the auditorium, but it seemed like Saturday evening might be prime time for a number of.
We did, we did include some additional staffing hours, both in the communications budget, as I mentioned earlier, as well as the recreation budget, assuming that the auditorium may be used outside of these hours. I think one of the things that the council may want to talk about is should we try to, you know, assume that there are, you know, we have the third Thursday poetry series? Do we want to try to get some consideration of trying to gear events towards certain Saturdays, you know, and see how that works? One of the things I, I am concerned about is just assuming that there's going to be something every Saturday night, you schedule staff and if something's not happening, you have staff just sitting around. And I had kind of heard a suggestion from, I think one of the staff had received a suggestion concerning the community where you can just schedule a staff and then if there's nothing happening, you can cancel it. There are certainly work rules and things like that that come into play, so we just can't keep scheduling people and then at the eleventh hour say, I'm sorry, we don't need you to work. And I think that's problematic from a member front.
Okay, so, in this section, the double asterisk note should have a corresponding double asterisk up on those, potentially on the Saturday ten to six hours, or is it a general?
It was a general.
There might be a standard Thursday, I think. There might be a standard, you know, it could be a different day.
Okay, that's helpful to understand how that works. That's what we're seeing.
Thank you. I don't have any particular questions regarding the hours for this evening, but I would just like to say that this is an area where I feel uncomfortable with what is proposed and I'll be looking for ways that I can suggest to make other savings so that we can have different hours than what's proposed.
Is that a hand? Councilmember Ray.
Yes. Yeah, I'd just be curious to have the cost savings number, because like Terry, I think I have some concerns, particularly about things like the computer learning center. I think, you know, for some residents, that's their only access to a computer, so they wouldn't be able to have access at all on Sundays.
I would just, not Sundays, obviously, would not, this would not be addressed, but in some of the other timeframes, there are, as you know, public access computers in the library.
Yeah.
One of the things I think because of just the connection of the buildings is pretty much they sort of need to go together because, for security reasons.
So just, I think the cost savings would be, number would be helpful because then councilmembers like Councilmember Siemens or myself could search for alternative ways to pay for that, if you wanted to keep that. You know, I assume we're going to end up with a strong and back and forth about different budget items.
We'll reconcile each. Councilmember Robinson.
And kind of along the same lines, I'd like to rationalize the demand for the auditorium and for the community center with the times that it's open. And I can certainly see that having it open long hours and then having people cancel or not book is not helpful. And it probably makes people frustrated to be here and nothing happens. At the same time, we need to be really attentive to what the community wants to use the community center for. I'm not sure, I don't have any specific suggestions, but I'm looking for some structural way to address that issue. address that issue.
Any questions for comments? We're adjourned.